We just need to take the first one apart. Get out there and do that. And I'm trying to get a little more confident. And since I don't say it, I'm gonna say it.
Pretty small.
We need to approach. Yeah. We're finally here. We got a high dog. 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 I think. You're right, brother. The lights are. How you been? You alright? I guess great. I see. The lights are. How you been? You alright? I guess great. I see. Really, it's alright. Basically, I'm the person who's more about it. Not a fine. How are you?
I'm good. I'm excellent.
What are you doing here? That's a good reason. I thought you were coming.
Those people who are interested in signing up to speak, they'll be placing the signing sheet out front here just a second. Out front and with color sign.
There was one, but we just got one. We're, I agree with you. Because I have to tell you, everything wasn't in. I'm not for it. Personally, y'all, I certainly think y'all would like it. I think you should, I think you should have that opportunity to do this. Alright, yes, no problem. I love that.
I want to call the special meeting of the city of Jackson, city council of the city of Jackson. Today is Monday, November 21st. This is our 10:00 PM meeting. We do have a form that directly reflects that we have Councilman Whitwell present, Councilman Tillman, Yarber, Councilwoman Barry Smoloff. We will start this morning. Our claims document, you will begin reading.
Order of approval claims number 24 on seats two and period at pages 372 to include surrender on the witness from back of the claim in the amount of $2,647,342.77 and making a proclamation for the payment due.
To move. They'll move in a proper second. Your questions coming.
I'd just like Mr. Hungry to go through the big ticket items briefly, please.
Okay. Good morning. We have a payment to see Perry builders in amount of $327,021.47. And this is in board number five of the construction of the J train administration and maintenance facility. We have a payment to venture technology for a, for computers that were purchased through a bid in the amount of $255,023. We have a payment to the metro Jackson convention center in amount of $251,020.69. And this is the 1% hotel motel restaurant tax payment. I also have a payment to the Jackson Heinz library system in amount of $148,348. And this is for the monthly appropriations of the library system. We have three payments totaling $446,707.34. And this is to Trustmark. This is for lease payment on equipment and interest on the 2012 and A and B bond through JRA. And we have a payment to the state treasurer in the amount of $172,990.63. And this is the state portion of funding assessment for the month of October. Finally, payment to professional transit management in the amount of $122,601.12. And this is the J train payroll.
Quick question. That venture technologies, I'm pretty sure I remember that was the bid that we approved.
Yes, this is, yeah, we approved the bid and this is the activity.
Thank you. No further questions, your president.
Call the favor. Motion carries four zero payroll.
Order of approval, order of approval, gross payroll, payroll, the Dutch claims number 24 on seats two and payment and proportion by papers thereof.
Some of adoption.
They're moving in a proper second and questions coming. Here it now, all the favor. Motion carries four zero number three.
Order authorizing the venting to keep contracts between the city of Jackson and various organizations of the use of 2011 emergency shelter grant funds property required of housing and urban development.
Some of adoption, second.
They're moving in a proper second, questions coming. Councilman Tillman.
Yes, we are talking a little about. You're a long position and most of our projects don't keep. They put it in some different.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Good morning, everyone. We, we have received this money on a regular basis, the emergency shelter block grant money from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And this money goes to agencies that traditionally work with the homeless population. And, and so various services will be provided to the homeless population. Some will be general population, some will be specific, like for children and for, and for females. But this is, these money, these, these funds will go to support the activities of these agencies. And it's specifically for these emergency shelter funds, so it's specifically for homeless population.
Who you got here, Mr. Mayor?
This is Iver Williams. Iver is the captain director of housing.
An award one resident.
Alright, relax. I thought you could survive. Can they just get their motor?
She used to, she used to bring my name.
Alright, any other questions coming? I read the vote. Auto favor. Four zero motion carries number three. I'm sorry, number four.
Order authorizing venting to keep contracts between the city of Jackson and various organizations for the use of 2011 community development block grant funds to implement various public service activities and to include for our housing activities which involves education and outreach.
Second.
They're moving in a proper second, questions coming.
Yeah, where are you?
Okay, Mr. Tillman, this is again Monday coming from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We receive an allocation each year and 15% of that allocation from our community development block land funds can be used for what's called public service. And this is public service organization, darned rock organization, that actually make application for funds to support their, their program. And anywhere from Boys and Girls Club, which is Ryan State, which is youth development, to shelter for battered families, which is a mess around victims. Early childhood development centers also receive funded here on this program, weight crisis center. So it's a myriad of services that we're performing through this, through this program. And we do this on a regular basis. And this year, you can see the organizations listed there, it looks like it's about 17, 15, 17 organizations.
I'm glad to see you, sir. Step out the scoop party, Boys and Girls Club. It's all the time is struggling.
They are, and again, we, we got 16% less money this year out of this program than we got last year, which was meant that we had, we had less money to give out. This coming year, this program, the CDBG program is also on the top of the block. The Senate has passed, US Senate has passed a funding bill that calls for a 14% cut, probably a cut that was, that we had this past year. So we really got to be vigilant and keep up what's going on in Washington, because it really helps to help hurt out agencies here at the local level when they aren't able to proceed these funds at the same level or consistent level for the community. Any other questions, comments? All the favor. Motion carries four zero. Number five, we're gonna move into number five prior to us doing that. We're gonna deal with the public comment piece here. I want to ask counsel if I could, legal counsel, just for a little duration, because this is an appeal. However, it's actually an order that is not in the form of an appeal. It's an order that has come to us from a council person. So we can deal with it as an appeal. And if we do deal with it as an appeal, then it will limit the public coming issue. Because according to appeal processes, you know, if they didn't speak in one place, then they wouldn't be allowed to speak in another place. Then the only problem with that is they haven't been able to speak in one place. So I think you see my dilemma. And if we're gonna deal with it as an order, then it would open up the opportunity for the folks who have signed up to, to do so, so.
If I could piggyback on that, two things I'd like to know. Usually in these types of scenarios, we get the opportunity to either accept or reject. And so the order we're sitting here looking at says order reversing. I would think that we also ought to have the opportunity to, to simultaneously look at an order of acceptance. And where it says the second last paragraph, it is therefore ordered, the provision of initial approval by Jack's application for special events hereby reversed, it is hereby accepted. I'd like to know about that. And secondarily, if there are any procedural issues, are we kind of like where we were the other day, where you have to unanimously accept this? Or how does that work? So that's what I want to know.
James Anderson, City Attorney's Office. In reference to the appeal, the ordinance provides that anyone dissatisfied with the decision of a special events coordinator can appeal that decision to the city council. Is it the noble appeal? In other words, you look at the, the application anew, you look at the information anew, and you make your own decision. That you're not necessarily reviewing the decision of the special events coordinator decided whether he made the right decision, you make your own decision. Inasmuch as it's an appeal, if the appeal is not reversed, then the decision of the special events coordinator would stand. In other words, if it's a two-two vote, it would not be reversed. And the last decision would have been the decision of the special events coordinator. With that said, the majority of the city council can choose to reverse the decision of the special events coordinator in whole or in part. They can choose to grant the permit with no restrictions as the applicant had requested. Or they can choose to reverse the permit with conditions that are not necessarily the same conditions that the special events coordinator placed on the conditional permit.
What are the current conditions?
The current conditions, there were time limitations.
Can I ask you a question, please? I, I want you to go through that. I need a brief history of exactly what has happened. And then you could include that. Is that what I need?
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
Description of what occurs. An applicant puts in an application to the special events committee for a special event. Usually that's done 15 days prior to the proposed special event. In this case, it was done the day of the, that was indicated to start the special event. The special events coordinator is authorized to waive that requirement of it being submitted 15 days prior to, if he chooses to, based on the information provided. In this case, it was decided by the special events coordinator to go ahead and, and take up the application anyway, as opposed to rejecting it because it wasn't submitted 15 days prior to the proposed start date. The information that's attached to the order, the underlying information, that's a copy of the packet that was provided to the applicant and what was returned to the special events coordinator. That's the information that the special events coordinator reviewed and making his determination. In this instance, some of that information was provided to the city attorney's office and we submitted our recommendations regarding that. As a result of all of this, a letter was sent conditionally approving the special event. That letter was dated November 2nd and is included in the package. The conditions that were placed on it was one, that they submit the $10 application fee. It's important to say, inasmuch as the purpose of the special event was to express first amendment rights, the ordinance provides that other fees be later. Also, as a condition, there was a time limitation. And the applicant had requested that the special event take place from October 26th through the late part of December. The special events coordinator restricted the time to October 26th to November the 10th. The application requested that they have use of the park for their protest for 24 hours a day, seven days a week during a period from October 26th to late December. Special events coordinator limited that, the time aspect of that from 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, based in large part of the fact that the parks are closed from, are only open from dawn to dusk. Other aspects of the conditional permit were based on those decisions. As far as not granting permission for water parties, inasmuch as those would be sitting in the park overnight, it would cause some substantial problems. And making sure that the park was in fact closed to the public at night and to not encourage vagrants and like to occupy the park at night. The details of what the applicant proposed are in the application. Some notable parts that were indicated in reference to providing security, there was no response to that. In reference to, pardon. In reference to whether additional facilities, restroom facilities would be required or asked for, there was no response in the, to that in the application. It's my understanding, based on verbal communications, that water parties were requested by the Occupy Jackson. One other aspect of this is that Occupy Jackson was actually incorporated the day of the application. It's uncertain at this point where the application was submitted, prior to it being actually incorporated or after it being incorporated, which would may have some technical problems. The assumption on the special events coordinator and the city attorney's office was to assume that it was done improperly.
Mr. Anderson, if I could just ask a couple of fifth questions here. First of all, I don't see in this packet an actual appeal. I see a couple of letters. And, and if we're, if they have appealed, the only thing that was approved was through November the 10th. And November the 10th is coming off. So it seems to me that on November 11th, they should have submitted a new application.
Councilman, before we, I want to be sure that we're talking about this actual piece of proposal before we get into the merits of it, because we hadn't, we hadn't read it into the record yet. So, so we
So, you know, so we talking about the merits of the application, if so, uh, I'm gonna ask if you put a pin there and then we'll come back to it after we entertain, um, the, uh, public comment.
Well, what, what I'm asking is, what, what is before us? Because I don't see, I don't see an official appeal.